Plenty of time.
Mark, great job Friday night.
Oh, were you there?
Yeah.
Thanks. That was fun.
I did not know that.
Who's you? Saturday or Friday?
Saturday, whatever night.
Saturday. He was there Friday night too, so.
Could have had it. Oh, yeah, now you're looking.
All right, it's six thirty and would you call the roll please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Would you stand for pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Bring us to our consent docket, item number two. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held November sixteenth, twenty twenty. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting held October thirteenth, twenty twenty. Item C is accept a five-foot temporary construction easement from Shayna and Kristen England located at seven thirteen North Gale, Ron and Sandra Patterson at seven forty-four North Gale, Susan King at seven fifty-two North Janeway, Kimberly Kousak at seven thirty-six North Janeway, Gilbert and Jan Owens at seven thirty-two North Janeway, and Jay Cyrus at six thirteen North Gale for the Kelly Creek Sewer Relocation Project. Item D, accept a twenty-foot temporary construction easement from Deborah Martin located at seven twenty-one North Gale for the Kelly Creek Sewer Relocation Project. Item E, declare city vehicles listed in exhibit A as surplus and authorize the sale or disposal of said property. Item F is approve the issuance of a fifty-dollar Christmas stipend to employees per council resolution. Item G is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one in the amount of two million eight hundred ninety-one thousand seven hundred two dollars and twenty-nine cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Item three, recess the city council meeting and convene a public hearing. Conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input and comments regarding the twenty nineteen consolidation annual performance evaluation report, capital planning, and resiliency.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is just an annual report that is submitted to HUD at the end of each program year. This report is for our twenty nineteen program year that ended at the end of September. The amount of funds awarded was three hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. The projects that were funded were home-delivered meals for seniors, counseling for abused children, rental and utility assistance for low-income households, and a sewer line rehab project along Kelly Creek. The total number of residents that benefited from these funds is three hundred and thirty-three dollars, and there were actually no funds to be rolled over this year.
All right, thank you. Is there any comment from the public? Anybody have anything they'd like to say about this item here? Nothing?
I just have one question.
Yes.
Did you say that three hundred and thirty citizens were affected?
Three hundred and thirty-three benefited.
Okay.
Yep.
Perfect.
Anything else? All right, we'll recess the public hearing and reconvene the city council meeting. Item four. Yes.
Motion to approve the report.
Oh, we do, okay.
Well, I think your motion on four.
We're just closing the public.
Okay.
All right, agree.
All right, consider approval of the twenty nineteen consolidation annual performance evaluation report and adopt resolution number nine nine seven two zero, submitting said report to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, capital planning, and resiliency.
Motion to approve, second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Thank you. Bring us item five, discuss and consider resolution number nine seven eight two zero, adopting the second substantial amendment of the twenty nineteen community development block grant application plan and authorize the mayor to submit the plan to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, capital planning, and resiliency.
Vice Mayor and Council, on September eleventh, HUD allocated an additional round of funding in response to the coronavirus of two hundred and ninety-four thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars. After consultation with various organizations and our CDVG advisory committee, the city has identified the following programs to fund. Home-delivered meals for seniors at thirty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty. A healthy-living backpack program through the Moore Faith Medical Clinic for twenty-three thousand six hundred and twenty. An internet connectivity program with the Moore Public School System for forty-one thousand eight hundred and thirty-four dollars. A rapid rehousing program for twenty thousand. An additional allocation to rental mortgage and utility assistance at fifteen thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. And a food storage addition for the Food and Resource Center at a hundred thousand dollars. And this round, we're recommending that we allocate fifty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven to administration expenses. Last round, we didn't allocate any funds to administration, but because this funding has its own set of regulations and laws and compliance with it, it's really taken a lot of time for us to make sure that we've got all the documentation set. So, we recommend funding administration with this round. So, staff recommends approval of this amendment to the twenty nineteen action.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions?
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Item six, consider approval agreement with aging services to provide home-delivered meals to homebound senior adults and more using community development block grant COVID-19 funds.
Vice Mayor and Council, items six and seven are the agreements with the local organizations for the programs that were identified in that action plan for item six.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none, we had a motion and a second. Call the vote please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham? I'm sorry, Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Thank you. Item seven, consider an agreement with Moore Faith Medical Clinic to provide free medical equipment to low-income residents of more using community development block COVID-19 funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Call the vote please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item eight, I believe we're going to table this, is that correct?
Yes, Vice Mayor and Council, more schools have requested we table this item.
I'm making a motion that we table item eight.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, items tabled. Bring us to item nine, discuss and consider resolution number nine seven six twenty, adopting the substantial amendment of the twenty twenty community development block grant action plan and authorize the mayor to submit the plan to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Vice Mayor and Council, we got notified from HUD back in October that we received the incorrect allocation for our twenty twenty program year. And the correct allocation amount is three hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and thirty-three dollars, a huge decrease of fifty-one dollars. So, this amendment just reflects the total allocation to reflect the correct allocation. We also would like to add a Christmas assistance program. Sharing Tree, a local nonprofit that serves low-income residents, has asked for funding with their Christmas assistance program. This program provides warm clothing, toys, and books for qualified low-income families. The Sharing Tree is anticipating a significant increase in the amount of families in need of this program because of the pandemic. And they also have not been able to perform a toy drive. They usually do a toy drive with Bank of Oklahoma every year, but since lobbies are closed, they haven't been able to do that. So, this amendment incorporates this Christmas assistance program and the reallocation of the fifty-one dollars. Staff recommends approval.
And it takes it away from the Janeway project because I assume that money's just left, there's money left in that project.
Yes, there is money left.
Is that ten, the Christmas assistance? Is that a separate item?
Yeah.
Yes, it's just the agreement with the Sharing Tree.
Okay.
Motion to approve on number nine.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item ten, consider approval of an agreement with the Sharing Tree to provide Christmas assistance for low-income families and more using community development block grant entitlement funds.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Call the vote please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item eleven, consider awarding a contract to M&amp;M Wrecking in the amount of eight thousand six hundred and ninety dollars for the demolition and cleanup of condemned property located at twenty-one sixteen South Briar Cliff Drive.
Vice Mayor and Council, the property at twenty-one sixteen Briar Cliff Drive has been condemned, is currently waiting for demolition. The property was posted for condemnation on September twenty-second. Some of the problems with the structure include exposed electrical wiring. There are structural supports missing from outdoor overhangs and missing shingles and exposed decking and broken windows throughout the house, all leading to an unsafe environment. An administrative hearing was held on October fifth, twenty twenty. The owner of the property was notified, but he lives out of state and we have not had any communications with him at all, despite our efforts. There are some occupants who live in this building. They had established some timelines for repair, but never met the timelines. City staff followed all city code and state law regulations in the condemnation process. We did solicit three quotes from wrecking companies. The low quote was from M&amp;M Wrecking for roughly eighty-six hundred dollars. If approved, the demolition would take place immediately. I've included some pictures of the structure in your packet, just to kind of give you an idea of the scope of the project. This is a little bit more expensive than we normally would see on a demolition. There's a couple of factors in that. One is the amount of items and material that would need to be held off. But the second is that these are on zero lot lines, so there will have to be some additional measures taken to make sure that none of the items will fall over onto the other neighboring property. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, the property owner has been notified this is gonna happen, and still no response.
Yes, that's correct. He lives out of state and that's all I can say about that.
You know, the property taxes are current on that property?
I do know that we've had several liens against the property, and to my knowledge, they've never been paid, which tells me that they have not paid their taxes.
Okay. And speaking of liens, so if we move forward with this, then another lien would be placed?
That's correct.
And if it's ever sold?
That's correct, yes, yes. And I should mention, this is a condemnation that was brought to us by a neighbor complaint. What the occupants have been doing is securing a tarp on the roof from the holes and missing shingles with random objects like tires, paint cans. When a big wind comes along, it actually blows those items onto the neighboring property. So, the neighboring property is sustaining some minor damage as it relates to this house.
All right. Is there any other questions from the council or anybody in the audience?
I have a question for Randy. What's the legality of that since I'm sure, I know we've notified them legally, but we have, we had this kind of experience in the past where at home, where property's been condemned, or even Elizabeth, either of you know?
Yes, it actually has happened in the tornado area where we have a homeowner, or is a homeowner. He lives out of the area and for whatever reason, they just never respond.
Okay.
Anybody from the audience have any comments? Okay, hearing done. Open for a motion.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Motion passes. Bring us to item twelve, discuss rezoning application number RZ one thousand, located in southwest quarter section of one T one O North, R three W being north of northeast Twenty-seventh Street and east of Eastern Avenue, from C three general commercial district to R one single-family dwelling district, and approve ordinance number nine five four twenty, application by Premium Land LLC Tabor LeBlanc. Planning Commission recommended approval seven to one.
Vice Mayor and Council, items twelve and thirteen on your agenda are companion items. This site is located east of northeastern Avenue and north of northeast Thirty-third Street in the Waters Edition. The property was rezoned to C three with the Waters Edition, and since that time, the property has remained vacant. The applicant is now proposing to divide this property to build five single-family homes on one point five acres. To develop the lot for residential use, the property must be rezoned from C three to R one. Utilities are available to serve the site, and stormwater detention has been included in the greater waters development. There is no flood plain located on the property. Access is provided from northeast Thirty-third Street. This is a residential street. There is no access to northeastern Avenue proposed for any of the lots. The envisioned Moore twenty forty plan calls this location to be urban residential, and due to the proposed land use of single-family homes, this application meets the intent of the urban residential land use designation and does comply with the plan. The subject site is located along the Eastern Avenue corridor. This is a developing, commercial, and industrial area. With the zoning and plating of the Waters Edition in twenty sixteen, the placement of the commercial lot adjacent to Eastern Avenue was seen as a buffer to the homes located further east. Since that time, we had the BNSF Logistics Center to the west rezoned as a PUD. This tract was seen as a transitional buffer again to the single-family homes farther east. By extending the homes up to Eastern Avenue, there are possibilities for land use conflicts. However, the BNSF PUD did include significant buffering in anticipation of potential conflicts with residential homes. And this includes, among other things, a fifty-foot firm buffer that sits beyond the right-of-way. So, staff recommends approval of this application and approval of the companion final plat. I will note that there was discussion at the planning commission regarding on-street parking on this street. The concern was that the on-street parking would create traffic hazards on northeast Thirty-third Street. And if you have any questions regarding that, I'd be happy to answer them.
So, will these five houses have fences around three sides?
Yes.
So, is that, are those concerns the reason there was a seven, one, and six, two vote?
Yes, yes.
Well, and then back when we originally zoned this to C three, we had quite a bit of pushback from the neighborhood just at north, not wanting it to be chapped and zoned in C three. And so, I'm sure he's probably a camper, so.
But he subsequently rezoned his property to C three.
Oh, he did?
Yes, so.
He was complying with the pressure.
Right, but I have not heard from that property owner before or again.
And there was nobody, there was nobody in the audience that had issues? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Call the vote please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Bring us to item thirteen, consider the final plat of the Waters Phase Four, a replat of Lot One, Block Nine of the Waters Phase One, located in the southwest quarter section of T one O N, R three W being north of northeast Twenty-seventh Street and east of Eastern Avenue, application by Premium Land LLC Tabor LeBlanc. Planning Commission recommended six to.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Had a motion and a second. Call the vote please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Item fourteen, consider rezoning application number RZ one zero zero one, located in the northeast quarter section of ten T one O N, R three W being south of northwest Twenty-seventh Street and east of Janeway Avenue, from C five automotive to commercial recreation district to I dash one light industrial district, and approve ordinance number nine five five two zero, application by MJH Properties LLC Malcolm Hall. Planning Commission recommended approval eight zero.
Vice Mayor and Council, this site is located east of Janeway Avenue and south of Vermeer. It's also known as seven hundred Vermeer Drive. The property is developed with one existing building. The applicant wishes to utilize the site for light industrial uses, which require the I one zoning. Public water and sewer is available to serve the site, and access is provided from Vermeer Drive. There is no new development proposed, so stormwater detention is not required. The envisioned Moore twenty forty plan calls this location to be light and industrial, and due to the proposed land use, this application does comply with the plan. The subject site is a developed lot along the Vermeer Drive with industrial and heavy commercial uses to the north, east, and west of the site. Due to the industrial nature of the area and the compliance with the envisioned Moore twenty forty plan, staff recommends approval of this application.
So, are they gonna do any modifications to the existing project?
They are not. They are having a harder time leasing the building out and have had some inquiries from users who fall within the I one category, which their building can, is suitable for, and so that's why they're requesting the rezon.
Does the building currently have water and sewer?
It does, yes.
I was just curious why you notated that there was water and sewer.
Being thorough.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, had a motion, second. Is there any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, call the vote please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Would bring us to item fifteen, consider authorizing the purchase of nine TASER seven conducted energy devices in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, thirty-two cents from Axon Enterprises as a sole source provider.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a budgeted expenditure and just is part of our annual replacement of non-functioning and outdated inventory. Recommend approval.
So, I noticed there were two different cartridges. Can you explain that?
Absolutely, sir. The TASER seven has two cartridges because if you would recall back to the retreat during the video, the officer deploys the TASER, it was ineffective. He has to take the cartridge off and apply the new cartridge. This new device has both cartridges already deployed, and so he can just immediately follow up with the second opportunity.
Very good.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, had a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, call the vote please.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Item sixteen, consider awarding bid number twenty twenty-one dash oh oh two for removal of existing roof and installation of a new roof on the Brand Senior Center to Heritage Hills Commercial Services LLC in the amount of eighty thousand one hundred dollars.
Vice Mayor and Council, this is a budgeted item for repairing the existing roof of the Brand Senior Center, and this was the lowest bid of eighty thousand one hundred dollars.
Are they a local company? Are they a local company?
I believe so. Heritage Hills, Oklahoma City, Habley.
How many square feet is that though? Anybody?
I do not know.
That just seems like it's all high.
But look at the other bids. Look at the other bids.
We had it budgeted for a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, some of the other bids are a hundred and fifty-five thousand.
And Vice Mayor and Council, when we were initially going through this process, Greg Dever, our maintenance supervisor, looked at the building and said it would probably cost around a hundred thousand dollars to replace the roof, so it really didn't surprise us.
Okay. I mean, I agree, eighty thousand seems like a lot, but.
Motion to approve. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the vote please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Thank you. Passes. Okay, recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item seventeen is the consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held November sixteenth, twenty twenty. Approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixty-six cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the vote please.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item passes. Thank you. Will recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the more risk management meeting, consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held November sixteenth, twenty twenty. Approve payment of a worker's compensation settlement in the amount of twenty-five thousand for CBR, claim number two zero five zero 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 six seven zero to Scott Lance, an authorized placement on the Adlorn tax roll. Item C is approve payment of a worker's compensation settlement in the amount of twenty-eight thousand for CBR, claim number two zero five zero 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 eight zero five to Jason Smith, an authorized placement on the Adlorn tax roll. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one in the amount of four hundred and twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirteen dollars and three cents.
Move to approve, second.
We've had a motion and a second. Call the vote please.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes, item carries. Recess the more risk management meeting and reconvene the city council meeting. We're all still here. Item number nineteen, new business, citizens forum, and items not on the agenda. Is there anyone here that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll bring us to item B, items from the city council trustees. Just have a couple of things, had the opportunity to, and Brooks was probably gonna say something about this, but I would too, the Christmas celebration, I forgot what that was called, but this past Saturday, it was a great time. Really, it really was a fun time, and just the Santa was there and all the fireworks, and there was a good crowd. I really do appreciate everything that our parks and the rest of the city staff does to make that happen. It's, you know, twenty twenty's been a really difficult year, so that was just a great time to come and celebrate Christmas. Also, just, we hope to have our mayor back really soon. He's doing really well, and hopefully he can be back at our next meeting. That's all that I have.
Vice Mayor and Council, we had a few things. Before I start, I'd like to turn it over to Police Chief Todd Gibson to make an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Vice Mayor and Council. I am proud to introduce our new Assistant Chief, Blake Green. Chief Green is a seasoned law enforcement executive that really understands innovative twenty-first century policing concepts and has a strong history of leadership development. I like to think that there are significant times in the city's history that changed the entire trajectory of the community. And when it comes to law enforcement service to our residents, I can say with confidence that this hire significantly raises the bar for service to our residents in the city of Moore. I think that we have a formidable leadership team at the Moore Police Department now, and that our police department is poised to develop leaders that will make an impact not only in our community, but make an impact on the Oklahoma law enforcement community as a whole for generations to come. And I would like to thank you for your continued support. I'd like to thank the city manager for his consistent daily support in helping us achieve excellence at the Moore Police Department, and we cannot have success in the police department without the support of this body in front of me, and I appreciate that very much, and we are always here to serve. Thank you very much.
Welcome aboard.
Vice Mayor and Council, based on the responses, emails I sent out a couple of weeks ago, city hall and city offices will be closed on Christmas Eve.
Good.
The, I sent the award letter out to you last week by email. Our thirty-fourth Street project between Telephone Road and Santa Fe was, will receive an award from the Oklahoma Asphalt Association next February, and again, I'd like to compliment Cliff Miller and Jerry Adler for all their efforts on this project. There were quite a few unforeseen obstacles that they had to overcome, but they got it done, and I drive the street every day and really appreciate it. To echo what Vice Mayor Ham said, the tree lighting ceremony Friday night was very nice. A little over a hundred people were there, and then we had a nice turnout for the Christmas Spectacular on Saturday night. And I do would like to congratulate the Parks Department for their creative thinking as to how to, you know, put on some sort of event during the pandemic, and I mean, they've been able, if it wasn't the spectacular, the tree lighting, it was the Halloween drive-through or some other things that they've done. So thank you to Sue and your staff. And then lastly, the tree branch pickup, as far as the, we're estimating about a hundred and twenty thousand cubic yards, and so we're forty percent complete with that portion of it, and we've covered about seventy percent of the city area. So what I'm told is it'll probably take the rest of the month to hit all of the city at least one time, and then we'll begin round two. That's all I have.
I have a question on that, and I know I've already asked a few questions on that.